Council Agenda Item Two. Okay, Mr. Christ?
I ask Mr. Neal to make a brief presentation on the Palmdale Power Plant.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I've been asked to give a brief presentation about a serious concern about the Palmdale Power Plant. As you know, the power plant is located adjacent to Plant 42. Plant 42 is a major employer in the Antelope Valley. In this slide here, you can see that it's in close proximity to Lockheed Martin and Northrop Grumman. The California Energy Commission is nearing the completion of a process that will make a decision about that, about the power plant. Testimony has already been heard regarding the infrastructure routing that you can see in this slide, as well as other issues such as health, biological impacts, traffic impacts, and even things like the plume that will be emitted by the power plant. The plant will be required to implement the best available control technology, and it will comply with all legal requirements. I fully expect the CEC commissioners to support the CEC staff's recommendation to approve the project. The CEC, however, does not concern itself with future projects and considers them speculative in nature. However, recent EPA created national ambient air quality standards should cause us to take a careful look at the power plant's impact on the future of Plant 42 and business in general.
Mr. Neal, before you, can you go back to that slide? Can you point out how high that plume will be?
This slide is one that we took from a Palmdale presentation. It's a little misleading in the sense that you're looking east to west, and that plume is really drawn as if it was blowing to the east. That plume, on its theoretical worst day, would be six miles long.
Six miles long or six miles high?
I am not certain, Mr. Christ. It will be a significant plume on those days. So, I wanted--
Which way will it be pointing?
The principal direction of the wind would make it blow to the northeast.
So, in the northeast, well, East Lancaster?
That's correct.
Primarily over our soccer fields?
That would be an area of principal direction of the wind, yes.
Am I correct that all of the pollution this plant is going to produce is going to blow directly into Lancaster?
The majority of the time, the wind blows northeast, and that blows it into Lancaster, East Lancaster. That's correct.
So, our neighbor to the south will get all of the benefit, and we will get all of the detriment. Sort of like the water flow, isn't that right?
Water flows downhill, and the wind blows to the--
Okay, that, I don't think it's funny. I think that this is going to have a significant impact on this city, and we should do something to alert people just what that impact is. I don't think it was funny that we had to spend millions and millions of dollars taking care of the City to the South's water that was dumped onto our city, and this is just another example of that. Am I correct that that's what it cost us, Mr. Bozegian?
It's cost tens of millions of dollars on our drainage program over the last 20 years, and we're still not quite done.
You know, we hear a lot about the competition between the two cities. This isn't competition. This is being infringed upon. And once again, it's happening, and we're doing nothing about it. Isn't that correct? I mean, am I missing something here? And has the City to the South made one overture to us to mitigate this in any way so that we somehow share the benefit of this project that is 30-year-old technology?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to make at all light of what the seriousness of this situation is. I am not aware of any offer from the City of Palmdale to the City of Lancaster to mitigate the concerns, the serious concerns it's bringing to our community.
Mr. Mayor, could we play a video clip number three? Because I did ask the City of Palmdale directly to the mayor in regards to your question, and he thought it was funny. Could you play video clip number three? Okay, you can go on with your presentation first.
I apologize. I think the next two slides sort of put the impact that the mayor is trying to, talking about, and you into context in a graphic way, and I think it would make sense before the presentation if I might cut it before the video.
On this next slide, it's regarding the particulate matter PM 2.5 24-hour standard that is set by the EPA. The maximum limit is 35 micrograms per cubic meter. The concern here is that future projects could potentially not be permitted if the ambient air quality were to exceed that pollution limit. What you see in this slide is that the current background level for PM 2.5 is 19 micrograms per cubic meter. The power plant adds an additional 12.6 micrograms. That totals up to 31.6 micrograms on a 35-microgram-per-cubic-meter limit, which means that it does comply with the air standard. However, it leaves a very small margin for future projects. In this next slide, this is the nitrogen dioxide one-hour standard, which is 100 parts per million, I'm sorry, 100 parts per billion. In this slide, the current background standard is 36.4 parts per billion. The power plant would add an additional 56.8 on a standard of 100, really meaning there's less than a 7 percent of the standard available for future projects. And this, what that means to aerospace companies is that any kind of NOCs creating devices like a jet engine, run-up stand, or stationary engines that might operate compressors or pumps, and depending on how the rule is interpreted, even mobile sources such as aircraft operating on the aprons could cause this area to exceed the threshold. It does comply by the rules, however, it leaves very little margin for other projects. Given at what is at risk at Plant 42, additional study really is warranted even if the CEC were to approve the project.
Just so we're clear, what we're saying is that due to the new regulations that came down from the federal government, if they build this power plant, there is a reasonable concern that we could lose the jobs at Plant 42. Am I right? Am I wrong? I mean--
I believe that to be the case, that it definitely warrants study to see that impact to really what is a significant employment base to the entire Antelope Valley. I have friends that work at Plant 42. You know, they don't recognize that Plant 42 is in Palmdale or Lancaster. It's a place where a lot of people work, and it's important that we protect--
So, are we doing anything to alert the people that work at Plant 42 that three, four years from now, there's a reasonable expectation that their jobs could be in jeopardy if they build that power plant?
Robert, I can answer that.
What?
Sure. The answer is, we are starting. We've met with the aerospace firms at your direction and that of council members Christ and Marcus. We've alerted them. We've alerted the Air Force on this issue, and we're trying to get other folks to realize this is a very significant issue and something that absolutely needs to be addressed now.
And so far, what we've gotten from the leadership of the City to the South is laughter, isn't that right?
Unfortunately, that is a correct statement, and I think there's some, yes, the answer's correct, yes.
And isn't it also true that we got this laughter with an admission that they've never read the federal regulations that came out a few months ago? They haven't even read them. They have no familiarity with them whatsoever, but they're laughing at our concerns of losing jobs at Plant 42.
That is correct, and that was most recently at the Air Quality Management District meeting of April 19th.
Thank you. Go on.
With that, I'd like to conclude my presentation unless there's other questions.
You know how I am, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Brett, could I have you come up real quick? Could you explain to the public your qualifications?
I'm the operations manager for Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, and we're responsible for part of the air quality permitting of the Palmdale Power Plant.
Could you go back to that slide for the PM 2.5 for the 24-hour, please?
Before we do that, I want to be clear. You represent both cities in the county in this area. This is the region that you represent, right?
Yes, sir.
You don't have a dog in this hunt for Lancaster or Palmdale, isn't that right?
That is correct.
So, as it sits today, you're the best thing we can get to an unbiased opinion as to whether or not this is going to affect the future growth in jobs at Plant 42?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is this graph depicted accurate, in your opinion?
It does graphically represent the situation. The one thing that would add a little complexity to it is all of this is fluid, if you will. I mean, what you're modeling here are the plumes, the emissions from these sources. So, the location of those and how they intersect could change slightly, but the totals are correct, yes.
Can I ask who brought this to your attention?
This came from city staff.
From the City of Lancaster?
Yes.
So, has anyone brought it to the attention of the City of Palmdale and the other jurisdictions?
The City of Palmdale is aware of it, and the aerospace contractors are also.
And how did that take place?
From city staff, City of Lancaster.
So, the City of Lancaster actually found the laws, found everything that, you were unaware of these laws at the time?
This information was in the actual application that the Palmdale Power Plant submitted to the CEC. A good portion of this is handled by the Environmental Protection Agency Region Nine, different than our permitting authority. So, that information was in there, but yes, a lot of the surrounding aerospace companies and our agency were not specifically aware of this issue.
Okay, that's all I have for you. Does anyone else have questions? Okay. Mr. Brett, Mr. Banks, I'm sorry, Brett Banks. Now, this is a 24-hour rating, correct, on this, the EPA ruling that came down?
On this specific one for PM 2.5 24 hours.
What's the geographic location for the aggregate level of 35? In other words, is it Southern California? Is it Antelope Valley? Is it a half-mile radius? Is it--
It really depends on the sources and how those sources are modeled. So, it could be a very small area on Plant 42. It could be slightly larger. It, in my opinion, it probably won't reach past the Plant 42 boundary.
So, I mean, but what are the assumptions that go into calculating that geographic location? I know it's wind, what the sources--
Meteorology, right.
All those things into. So, in this particular case for this project, what are we talking about? A two mile, two mile, square miles, six square miles? About how big of a circumference, maybe?
For this specific instance?
For this specific project?
It wouldn't leave the boundary of Plant 42.
It wouldn't leave the boundary of Plant 42 for this particular level?
For this item we're talking about, correct.
Then, right now, this, the one that they'd use for the application of saying that the level, the existing ambient aggregate level is 19, that's taken at the AQMD headquarters?
It is.
Okay. Do you think that there would be any change, maybe make it worse if it was taken over by Plant 42? Because if you're talking about a smaller geographic area, how can you rate what's happening here if you're taking it farther away?
It could be different.
It could be different.
I don't know. It could be.
Wait a minute. The rules will apply to Plant 42.
Correct.
But we haven't done any testing at Plant 42. We did that how far away?
Two miles, two and a half miles.
How does that make sense?
We only have one stationary monitor. That's the monitor on our office that monitors all these pollutants. They take that as the background for the area, and then the rest is all calculation from estimation and source test of other units of similar type.
But if they decide to shut down Plant 42 because they're exceeding the new federal rules, that's going to be tested at Plant 42, right?
It will be modeled. I don't know if you'll have any physical measurement of all the pollution together. It's a computer model based on some assumptions and calculation.
And that's the appropriate way you guys do this stuff? Because, you know, I don't see a judge letting that get into evidence, but, you know, what do I know?
It's the standard permitting policy.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just two more questions. So, in the model--
Yes.
I didn't read, because I read the EPA's rule, and I didn't see anything in there on how you're supposed to create the modeling, you know, what assumptions are supposed to be put in. Is that done by the agency that's applying for--
No, there's a standard policy and methodology for those.
Just some standard methodology that you say.
It's universal, right.
Now, does this get affected by the wind since it's PM 2.5? I mean, on a windy day, a less windy day, and how is that factored in?
Well, that's why I was explaining that the points where you will have an issue that could exceed the standard could be at various points on Plant 42 or surrounding property because of that. They take three years of meteorological data, actual data that was at Air Force Plant 42, and use that in the model.
In the modeling, so that way it takes into averaging out a windy day, a calm day--
Or a Santa Ana condition--
Or Santa Ana condition and stuff, so they get a better statistical analysis on what they're really looking at.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
When I was at that meeting of your agency, there was some concern from the City of, well, from the City to the South that the Air Force, Plant 42, all of the contractors there, Boeing, Northrop, have all signed off on this. Did they sign off on this before the new regulations came out?
I have a feeling, especially the Air Force, looked at other things, not this specific regulation. This regulation has come into effect since the submittal of their application.
Well, you're not answering my question. They go to the different people working there, Boeing, Northrop, you know, Lockheed, I guess Lockheed's not there anymore, are they? And they ask them, "Do you approve of us putting the plant there?" And then after they approve of putting the plant there, new rules come out that they haven't even considered, isn't that right?
That is correct.
And under the new rules, those companies could be barred from adding any more buildings, any more test facilities, any more pollutants to that particular area, isn't that right?
It could.
Well, what do you mean it could? Is it a guideline or is it a rule?
No, the standard is a rule, but depending on the location that the proposed new source would be, it may or not, may or may not, fit in under the standard. It's not like a bucket that gets filled to a certain level. It kind of shifts with the wind, if you will, and in certain locations, it may fit.
So, some of the companies could add to the pollutant load, and others couldn't, depending on where they're located at Plant 42, right?
Yes, sir. It's possible.
And do you have any idea how much a percentage of our workforce is employed at Plant 42 presently?
I don't.
Is it a safe bet that if those companies decide to move elsewhere because the EPA will no longer let them expand, that the economic crisis we're in today will be, you know, a blip compared to what's coming?
I would think so.
We're not going to be selling any new cars. We're not going to be, we're not going to be selling any fruits and vegetables at Farmer's Market. We're going to be in a depression this valley has never seen before if that were to come about, isn't that right?
It could.
And not one person has looked at this and done any type of analysis as to whether or not we should revisit building that plant regardless of how much trash is dumped in Lancaster, regardless of that issue. This actually could crush the entire valley if the EPA has its way and says, "No more," right?
And the contractors around Plant 42, after this was brought up, are spending time, taking a look at future projects, what type of projects those are, and how they might fit into this.
And has the City of Palmdale done anything to revisit this, to say, "Maybe we should wait. Maybe we should reexamine the ripple effect this is going to have." Have they done anything like that?
I'm not aware of that, other than I know they've been in contact with the contractors at Plant 42.
Their lobbyists have been in contact, right? Thank you.
Mayor Paris--
Brett, just another quick question. The Palmdale Power Plant, according to this chart, will produce how much pollution?
Totals? Or on the chart?
According to this chart, PM 2.5 for a 24-hour.
The 12.6 micrograms per cubic meter.
And under the new law, the increment rule, how many are they allowed?
Nine.
So, they're going to produce 12, and the new law says they are only allowed to do nine?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, help the dumber ones around. How is, you can have a rule for nine, and they get to do 12?
Okay. Again, they submitted their application and this modeling prior to the advent of the rule, right? The new rule comes into effect October 2011. If they receive their permit prior to that rule coming into effect, then the rule doesn't affect that project. If the permitting takes a longer period of time and comes after the effective date of the rule, then it takes effect on the project.
So, that's why they're racing to get the permit before October?
Well, they've been in process for five years, which is kind of a lengthy process, but I don't know if it's exactly--
But that's why they're not, that's why they're not going to relook at this, right? Because if they look at it, if they slow down, if they stop and say, "Wait a minute, what effect is this going to have on the jobs at Plant 42?" If they do that, then October will pass, and they're not going to be allowed to build it because the Environmental Protection Agency says you can't build something that is that, pollutes that much in this area, isn't that right?
That is correct.
Now, did the EPA just pull this out of their ear, or is there a reason why they don't want that level of pollution?
No, this is one of many standards that they've reduced for protection of public health.
Protection of public health, meaning if they exceed it, the public health is threatened, isn't that right?
Yes.
But not the public health in the City to the South, the public health of the citizens of Lancaster, isn't that correct?
The majority of the plume would move across--
Why is it so hard to say the obvious? It is not the citizens of Palmdale that are going to be affected by this. It is the citizens of Lancaster. It is our children that could get sick from this, isn't that right?
The majority of the time. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Paris, if I may say something. You know what I'm really frustrated is, obviously, this information's come to light just in the last couple of weeks, but historically, if you go back and take a look, and I can recall being a planning commissioner, we took great lengths to make sure that that Plant 42, we went out of our way as a city to make sure that the jobs were secure at Plant 42, even to the degree where we went back and rezoned property just so that that Plant 42 could be protected. And my real frustration is when they talk about not rushing to conclusions. So, here we've got this new information that comes to light, and when we talk about working in cooperation, it was the City of Lancaster that stepped up 10, 15 years ago, rezoned property, put us at risk from a legal standpoint, because we actually changed the zoning on property that was residential so we could create some overflight area, so they could develop more jobs there. And then we turn around, and these guys are rushing to, it sounds like to me, to ramrod this through so they don't have to meet the new requirements.
Well, that's pretty clear. That's what they're doing, isn't it?
Yeah. So, but the frustrating part is when they talk about cooperation and working together, because I can remember clearly 10 to 15 years ago where we spent time after time at the planning commission making sure, and there was a lot of upset. We had a lot of developers that lost millions of dollars because of the rezoning of property there. I wouldn't know what the value would be today.
I remember. Okay, thank you. One more quick question for Mr. Banks. This particular rule that came out in October, this new rule from the EPA, since you described it as being localized and like at Plant 42, that's there. But take Plant 42 and the power plant out of the equation completely, could this new rule affect our development of manufacturing or our goals that we have at Foxfield Corridor or any other localized place that we could hit that threshold, and it would stop our ability to grow as a valley and grow the economy of manufacturing?
I would say it's unlikely because of the type of source that would have to create that pollution. You're talking about really large, usually combustion-type sources, power plants, cement kilns, those type of things.
Okay, good, thanks.
Mr. Banks, I just had one question is, could you describe to us what PM 2.5 is as is described in the brochure from air quality?
Well--
As a particulate?
It's particulate less than 2.5 micron, which is extremely small. And the difficulty with that is your normal body protection systems have difficulty keeping that from going deeper into your lungs.
Don't they consider it cancer-causing?
It's a potential carcinogen, yes.
Potential.
Gets in our children's lungs, they can't cough it out, and what happens is they either develop lung cancer or emphysema in far too many cases. Isn't that really what happens?
I don't know that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that since day one, my main concern has been on the effect on aerospace. And since day one, everything that we've examined up until a week or so ago was, could this plant be built? I would say that was, has been on my mind. And now, it's to the point where should it be built? The more I find out about it, the less I like it. And that's not, I'm not speaking to you specifically, Mr. Banks, right now. I just want to clarify some of the reasons that I have concerns with it is the PSD increment rule, which, as it's been explained to me and is perfectly clear here, and I understand the ambient part of it, but it's still clear to me that it's a concern. And my greatest concern was that everybody involved, all the aerospace, the Edwards Air Force Base, Plant 42, come back to the table, make sure that everybody understands this rule and how it will affect us. My other question specifically to you was the unmanned aircraft that just had its first flight with Northrop. That was stationary testing up until the time first flight. And I asked you if Plant 42 were to do the same kind of testing because of the concentration area that we're talking about right now. I asked you specifically if that could possibly not get a permit because of the stationary testing and what's going on with this, if that plant were in place.
It's possible.
Also, the other, I wanted to make it clear, too, is that also Palmdale's talking about the High Desert Corridor being in that concentrated area. And there are two other projects. There's a, was it 17,500-acre solar farm that Palmdale's looking at in that near vicinity, which is more concentration. And then the county's talking about an inland--
Inland port.
Port. So, what we're talking about is that very-- So what we're talking about is that very concentrated area. And my concern is that I, I look so far as to it could be a problem with our national defense if Plant 42 can't do the testing that they, they want and need to do. And the other part of it is if it's going to endanger the jobs of aerospace in any way, shape, or form here in the valley, it's very, it's very, it's very concerning to me. The state of California, we already know, as we saw tonight, is not our friend. They're on suicide watch. And they're really putting the cities, the local cities on suicide watch by coming and taking another $3.5 million, but as well as endangering the jobs locally. So I just had to get that off my chest.
Brett, one last thing. On the PM 10, we're out of, what's the word?
Attainment.
Attainment for PM 10, correct?
For.
For this power plant?
For the, excuse me, at the state level, yes, sir.
At the state level. The city is allowed to buy credits to mitigate that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they're going to take millions of dollars, send it to San Joaquin Valley so we can make our air quality here dirtier. Is that correct?
That's the process, the.
So we're going to take millions of dollars, send it to San Joaquin Valley so we can make our air dirtier.
San Joaquin Valley's air is dirtier than ours currently, and they have transport into our area that impacts our area.
So that's what they call mitigation, correct?
Correct.
Now, this PM 2.5, under the PSD rule, can you mitigate that?
No.
Okay, can you explain why?
Well, that's just the current standard, there's no.
So there's no way to buy around it?
There is not. The only thing they can do is modify the project to reduce that number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Thank you for being honest with us and upfront. I really appreciate what you've done.
You know, sometimes it, it seems like I'm mad at the person speaking. I'm really not mad at you at all. Actually, you're the one who, who, if you hadn't brought this to our attention or made it available to us, I guess it was actually you that, that discovered it. Councilman Chris discovered it, we, this would have just sailed through and, you know, five years from now, we'd be living with the, the outcome.
We have a couple of video clips. Could you show Mayor Paris's, the video clip number two?
You know, I remember reading about Columbia Challenger, ready to take off, and there were people in the room saying, we've studied it to death, launch, launch, launch. And it didn't matter that people were coming in saying, you know, the temperature changed. You know, we've never, we've never launched at seven degrees. We've studied this to death, launch, launch, and we know it happened. And that's what I'm hearing here today. You know, what I, this morning, I flew over the Antelope Valley as I came in to come to this meeting, and we have a beautiful valley here. And what are we doing? What, what, what possesses people to want a power plant that produces more toxicity than, than all of that list that was provided to you of all of these other toxic plants right in the center of Plant 42, but more importantly, right in the center of our valley? Now, as the mayor of Lancaster, yes, I am opposed to having 14, what, 114 tons of pollutant blow over into Lancaster from Palmdale. You know, we just got finished dealing with thousands and thousands and millions of gallons of water that flowed in from your Rancho Vista project. I mean, it took us 20 years to solve that problem. This is a problem we can't solve. If, if the federal government is more powerful than the state and more powerful than Palmdale, we're going to get screwed, and excuse my language, but that's exactly what this document says. It says that five, 10 years from now, if Lockheed or Northrop come up with a whole new design, a whole new project, but they got to test the engine, or they got to test something else that might produce some pollutants, they can't build it here. And you know what's going to happen? It's happened before. Those jobs are all going to go to Georgia or to Oklahoma or to wherever else they're allowed to build what they need to build. Because make no mistake, what he is asking you to do is to cap the future development of Plant 42. And for what? Let's be honest, what it's for. Its decisions were made five years ago, before October of 2010, when the federal government made this decision. And he has said to you, he has said to you, he has a vague understanding of this. Well, that vague understanding is what will cap the development of Plant 42 and cause them to move. You know, I've been in politics here for a long time, but where I started was in the planning commission. And the very first thing that came before us was a major from Plant 42, and he was concerned about what we were going to build under the flight plan or the pattern, I guess, you know, what do they call it, flight pattern when they take off? And I said then, we can never, ever make a decision that will threaten Plant 42. When I was born, my father worked there. When I went to college, my stepfather worked there, and it was the Lockheed student loans that paid my way through law school. That is the jewel of this valley. And because somebody made a bad decision, which what may not have been a bad decision five years ago, it's a terrible decision today. And because he wants to use rhetoric and he wants to laugh and he wants to embarrass people and he wants to interrupt the chairman of the board to keep her from being able to talk, he doesn't want you to look at it. And what I'm asking you to do is look at it, just find out. Because you don't want to be the person five years from now that they look at and said launch. Because right now, you don't have enough information to launch. And everybody in this room, everybody in this room knows we do not have enough information. Do the right thing. Thank you.
You can see by the video that what we're asking the city of Palmdale to do is to take a step back, not cancel the project, take a step back, look at the impacts on what it, what it would do to the entire community. Could you play video clip number one, please?
Are we using 85% of our remaining credits to produce 35 jobs?
We're using a portion of the standard in and around Plant 42 for this project.
For 35 jobs? So for $1 billion, we're going to create 35 jobs, okay? El Pollo Loco has more jobs than that. I, I, I don't get it. I don't see why we're doing this, why we're putting all of our remaining credits, okay? If we were to build a plant that had 10,000 jobs, okay, we couldn't do it under these conditions.
Well, I don't know if we, that's true. I don't know if that's a true statement.
Well, that, that's exactly my, my point. We don't know. We don't know, and that's what I would like to ask the board to come back and to take a look at this and to find out just how it, how is it going to affect the mission at Air Force Plant 42? Because I'm hearing from everybody, we don't know. But if this power plant goes through, we're done if we're wrong.
So the point we're trying to make is that we don't know what we're doing. We don't have the facts in front of us. The local AV, AQMD doesn't know. We don't know if it's grandfathered. We don't know the impacts that it will have for us. So what we asked the city of Palmdale to do was, again, take a step back, let's take a look at the impacts, and we don't think that we're asking too much to do that. We want to work together and to find out just what the impacts to this valley would be. So what our concern is, are you going to impact 10,000 jobs, $1 billion for 35 jobs? Okay? It will impact 10,000 jobs, okay? We're going to use all our credits up. This is like a glass of 35 ounces, okay? There's 19 in it, they're going to put, they're only allowed to put nine in it, they're going to put 12.6 into it. The entire area only has 3.4 left. It's a big concern to the city of Lancaster. Can you play video clip number three, please?
Before you go on, Mr. Banks, is that accurate?
It, it does tend to fluctuate like one of the questions that Councilman Smith asked. It really depends on where it's modeled, where the source is, and where the direction.
What I'm asking you, is it accurate that this could affect 10,000 jobs?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And by effect, I mean, we could lose them.
We could, yes.
Thank you.
Brett, you asked us what you'd like. I'd like the AV, AQMD to come back to us next meeting with analysis of the increment rule on the Palmdale Power Plant and its impact on the future expansion of Air Force Plant 42 and the Antelope Valley. Second, I'd like both councils to work together to explore this concern.
We are.
Okay.
Within our district. Both councils are here.
You don't want to work together, Jim, just say so.
I'll work together on constructive, common, good-type projects and will not be a part of this. And this is just a shameful backdoor attempt to inhibit a project that is on the threshold of getting approval.
And the fourth thing, I'd like the project approval process, both the Antelope Valley Air Quality Control District and the CECB suspended until we can understand the impacts of the increment rule. So that's what I would like to see.
So because the city of Lancaster asked the city of Palmdale to work together, to take a step back, we asked them several times during the meeting, can we take a step back and take a look at this, that it's, so it's reasonable, so we understand what we're getting ourselves into? They denied it, denied it, denied it. There's several more clips, but I think everybody gets the, the gist of it. I would like to ask the council to take a formal position against the Palmdale Power Plant at this time.
Before we get there, I'd, I'd like to clarify something. This is not the city of Palmdale doing this. It's not even the whole council doing this. This is the mayor of Palmdale, let's be specific. And, and I think we're making a mistake by, by casting aspersions or, or putting the light on the city of Palmdale. But it's not them, it's one person. One person has led this power plant. One person has garnered the votes from the council to do it, and one person is laughing at you as you, as you talk about what the, the director of the agency he belongs to is saying could result in the loss of 10,000 jobs. We just don't know. I mean, let's, let's put responsibility where it belongs. It belongs with the mayor of Palmdale, not the people of Palmdale, not even the council of Palmdale, not the staff of Palmdale. This is one person.
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Is, I don't know that, can we do a motion without it being on the agenda or?
I have a speaker card, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Talbot, I know how to run this meeting. Just sit there, I will call you when it's time. Right now, I'm asking the city attorney a question. Do not interrupt us again, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up one more issue, just really reiterate. Councilmember Chris mentioned that the pollution that will come from this plant will go over the soccer fields. And as we're sitting here and I'm thinking about how many more people this does affect, it's right over Eastside High School. I don't know how many students are there on, you know, a daily basis most of the year. We're talking about neighborhoods, it's in line of the neighborhoods. I know it's over my neighborhood, the fallout from this. It's also Lancaster Baptist Church, Lancaster Baptist School, and West Coast Baptist College. One of the other concerns to me is that even though I have a granddaughter whose health is already compromised due to a liver transplant, she'll be in, in line for whatever the fallout is from this power plant also. And I just want to remind people that it's, it's, it's far larger than I think a lot of people have stopped and, and thought about. And I go back to, we've looked at, could it be done? And now it's, should it be done? And I think that's where we're at.
I, I just want some clarification, is what can we do tonight?
You, you could entertain a, a motion to go on record against the, the power plant. The agenda item includes a discussion or action regarding the proposed Palmdale Power Plant.
Thank you.
And for the record, I just want to make sure there's some clarity here. I think what, what Councilman Chris is actually saying, and this is, you know, we could take the, the AVTA. I mean, I think really what we're asking is somebody just to step back and take time. I, I just can't believe how crazy this is to compromise. I mean, we have two issues. We've got jobs, which, and I, and I, I'm sure that plant is running maybe a fourth of its capacity in its heyday, Plant 42. And really what he's doing is, is nailing the coffin shut for future jobs potentially. And I can't understand why somebody would not want to, following his words, Mayor Ledford's rules, words, why don't we step back and think this through so that we don't make a mistake? I think he said that historically, and he likes to use that line. So now when we say, hey, look, we want to work with you, you want to work with us, to stop and think things through, so we're putting jobs potentially online that nobody can answer. I haven't heard any answers yet, none whatsoever. And then, then we already understand the health risks involved. So it's almost like a double-edged sword. So, so we're going to vote on making a request to stop it altogether, or we're going to make a request to have them consider to postpone it and gather the facts? I want to make sure that, that I'm clear.
We've gone through the process. We've looked at the, at the air quality board. Councilman Marquez and myself have looked at it, and it's become bigger and bigger and bigger. It's, it's, it's not just the six-mile plume in the air, the visual pollution that we'll be looking at. It's not the high-pressure gas main that comes through the city of Palmdale that's going to threaten thousands of people's lives to do that. It's, it's, it's the pollution, it's, it's the jobs, it's, it's the, the entire package. What does this do for the Antelope Valley? I, I can't see any good that this will do for the Antelope Valley.
You know, that's really the question that's never been answered. Where's the benefit? Where, where is the benefit to the, to the people of the Antelope Valley?
Kind of one-sided.
I mean, all of this power is just going to be sold to the grid. I mean, it's, it's not like it's going to power anything. It's not like anybody's electricity bill is going to go down. The, right now, the only thing they're planning to do is sell it to, to the grid, sell it to Southern California Edison. There, there is zero benefit that I can see to the, to the people of Antelope Valley. What I, what I'd like before we do the speaker cards is exactly what the motion is, and then they have something to speak to.
I, I think we should take a formal position. At least, at least it would help myself and Sherry answer questions where the city of Lancaster stands at the, the board meetings on the, the power plant itself. You're talking, they call it a hybrid power plant that actually only produces 7% solar. We need a position on it. We need a position on it, are we for it, are we against it? Do we want to work together? I, I am against the entire power plant, period. So that's what I would like to see the-
So, so is the motion to do everything that is reasonable to oppose the construction of that power plant?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Good evening, council and staff and citizens. First and foremost, I'm going to give Councilman Chris credit on two fronts, for actually doing something that's been brought to the attention of this council over 14 months ago. And secondly, for admitting at that air quality meeting, which I attended, that the ball was dropped. That's really what's happened here. The other council members, where have you been? Mr. Talbot brought this before you 14 months ago, but instead of you listening to Mr. Talbot's concerns, which he was more than willing to help you explore what was really going on, Mr. Smith and Ms. Marquez chose to not return phone calls and run Mr. Talbot down. Now we're at a position where, Mr. Talbot was right, wasn't he? He want, he cared about the children and the schools and the air and so forth and so on. I hear this 10,000 jobs, we've been hearing that since he went to China last year, and he hasn't brought one job back.
Mr. Abbott, stay on topic. State women, wait a minute, we're not do, we're not doing this anymore, we're not, we're not making this a forum for people to come in and slam everybody they want to slam, stay on topic, the topic's the power plant.
The topic's power plant, is what I'm talking about.
Wait a minute, if you want to come back and talk about the BYD or anything else, do it then, right now, stay on topic.
I'm on topic, and 10,000 jobs were mentioned, so I haven't got off point at all, okay? There were jobs promised, and you guys are talking about those 10,000 jobs, which 10,000 jobs are you referring to then? If you want to clarify that, it's all-
I was referring, Mr. Abbott, I was referring to, when we dropped the ball, I was referring to myself, I wasn't, I didn't do a good enough job when I was originally on the board to take a good look at it. I'm not condemning any of the other council members, I'm not pointing my finger at Councilman Smith or Marquez or anyone else on the board. When I say something at those meetings, I'll, I'm referring to myself.
And I can appreciate that, but I am pointing fingers, because that's why we're at, where we're at today, because this project's been on the board for five years. So what's the excuse of everybody that's been on this council for the past five years why they didn't step up and address the situation? You know? Somebody said, here, am I missing something? Now, with the mayor, yes, we're missing a lot here. That's exactly what we're missing. Citizens have come before you and spoke and expressed their concerns about the safety of the citizens in the valley, and it was just, you know, shoved aside. No one cared what Mr. Talbot had to say, when, you know, he, he was supposedly had returned phone calls. No, to this day, two months later, those calls haven't been returned. Mr. Talbot has been the number-one person that has brought forward this issue and trying to protect the citizens as well as the children, and I haven't been off point. The bottom line is, is we didn't bring the 10,000 jobs, and Palmdale is bringing something forward, and you guys just want to continue to bicker and go back and forth-
Thank you, Mr. Abbott, your time's up, thank you.
Mr. Chris took 30 seconds of my time.
Mr. Abbott, your time's up.
We spent about 45 minutes on this, and I get three to talk about it, but I was here-
Life is never fair, is it?
You're always making smart remarks while I'm, my three minutes are up, sir. I did bring it to your attention, and you twiddled your thumbs, and when Mr. Chris and Ms. Marquez got on that board, I mentioned something about PM10s and PM2.5s. And Mr. Chris wasn't aware of what they were, but he's certainly done his homework since then. And if you remember Jane Williams, my colleague from Desert Citizens Against Pollution, she was here and she explained to you that PM10 is like the strand of hair, which I don't have right at the moment. So one-fourth of a strand of hair is what a PM2.5 is. What took you so long to get into action? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Somebody give me the motion again.
I believe the motion, the formal motion was to do everything reasonable to oppose, I'm not sure if the word oppose is correct, the plant, the Palmdale power, power plant.
At this time, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
I, I mean, there's a, until we have all the answers as to whether or not it, it's the impact.
Till we can see the impact of what the PSD, the 2.5, will have on this, we can take appropriate action.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had, I just had, if we could, just ask, some people brought up, some other council members brought up some other information, I'd like to just ask Brett another question if I could.
Sure.
Okay. Just so I, so I get it clear, when, when we were talking about losing 10,000 jobs, is that future jobs or the ones that are there right now?
Both.
Shut down?
Both.
So, so what you're saying is that all the jobs at Plant 42 that they have now, we could lose because of this power plant?
I don't think so, they have current permit limits that they're living and working under right now.
Okay, because I, that's why I'm not clear, because I thought we were talking about future jobs, that it's got to stop any stationary, you know, jet testing or any of those kind of things, that it's, that it meets the levels. It was 2.3 or 3-point-something short of the maximum, so that means no jobs would be lost, but future jobs would be lost, future testing and the, the future development of the aerospace jobs that we now, that we now have.
Ron, you can look at it either way, but most of the people out there go from one assignment to another assignment each time they have a new contract that comes in, it's permitted through the ABA QMD, and those jobs might be lost, it might be a new job as far as we look at it, but it's the same individual out there that-
Right, now, I'm not, I don't want to argue with you about the semantics of going from one job, of course, if you go from one job to another, that other project's not there anymore, so the level's got to be, I mean, like, like Brett has said, this is a very fluid, fluid model, but the one thing that was brought up by, by Sheri, and I had read something else, so I wasn't at the AQMD meeting, so I want to just clarify this. Now, what did the SEQA come back or the EIR come back? I, I had read someplace that there was no significant health risks from, from this, or just tell me what, what was said there, because I wasn't at the AQMD meeting.
No, that's a, you're correct, I mean, there's modeling that all those are under the state and federal thresholds.
Okay. Yeah, and then what was the, what was the purpose of the, the power plant itself for the city of Palmdale? Why are they, why are they building it? What's the, what does the, the city of Palmdale itself think is their benefit from building this? I know what we think are, you know, the-
I asked them specifically, they said they have several options. However, their application to the CEC shows 36 miles of transmission lines that go down Avenue M to Fortia Street, over to Barrel Springs Road, and to the, uh, uh, grid located at Vincent Hill. So it doesn't look like they're going to do it, hook it to Plant 42, it doesn't look like they're going to do an aggregate, it looks like they're going to sell it to the grid. The city of Palmdale can't afford a fall festival, much less a billion-dollar power plant.
Right, but if they, if they build, what they're looking at is they're selling the power, or they're going to get monetary benefit from the, from the power plant? Is that what they're looking for?
Let, let me interrupt, I, I really don't want to go there. It's not our job to, to criticize Palmdale as to how they spend their money or don't spend their money. What, we should limit this to is what they're doing to the citizens of Lancaster if this thing goes forward.
Correct. Right, and, and the only reason I brought it up, Mr. Mayor, is because you said there was no benefit to the valley for the power plant, but, I mean, even though there might not be a benefit for us if there's no aggregate, if the city of Palmdale was making money from the power, just like we're trying to do from the solar power, that would be a benefit for the Palmdale citizens, not necessarily a benefit for us at all. I'd like to see an aggregate, but of course, we're not going to, we're not going to have that, so.
Correct.
But, okay, th- thank you, those were the questions.
Everybody weighed in? Anything else?
Well, I, I would actually like to make a, a different motion than the, than the one that you have, I don't, at this time-
Want to amend his motion?
What's that?
You want to move to amend his motion?
Um, or, or I'll move for a, a different motion, if I can, is that, that, at this time, I would like to see, I know right now, everybody is met with, we've sent out letters to the aerospace industry, I think Congressman McKeon's office was contacted, there's a lot of people that haven't chimed in yet. I don't mind if, if Mr. Chris could table this motion till we get back and find out what everybody's chiming in, I mean, Boeing and all the other modeling, what I've heard from Mr. Neal and, and from Mr. Banks, is that this is a concern that needs to be looked into. I, I'm uncomfortable saying, I oppose the power plant overall right now until we find out later, I'd like to, I'm very concerned about the jobs that we have in the totality of the valley that's coming out of there, very, very concerned with it. But I want to hear, this is something that's new, I, myself, I believe, city of Palmdale in good faith started five years ago with a project, but then now the federal government has pulled the rug out from them because of the, because of the new rule in October, and this has just come up just recently, and it was good that you were able to, to find that out. But I think, in talking with some of the questions that were asked, the aerospace industry was caught off guard, the, the air force might have been caught off guard, and I like to see, they've just been notified, I don't mind voting on a motion like this at a later date. What I'd like to do is make a, you know, to say that, I'd like to see, say, look, this is, we are very concerned with this, PM2.5, we think that it should be a priority, the AQMD should be looking into it, but to oppose it at this time without hearing them, I think the, the mayor just said, you know, we have to, to, to get all the answers in, and that, that's how I feel at this time, so, I don't have to, if you don't, there's not a second for a motion to say-
I'm not willing to pull my motion-
Okay.
-for it, but I would remind you that there's other things as far as the PM2.5, it's the health risk for the kids, it's the soccer fields, it's not just the, the PSD, it's not the increment rule, it's the, the, the total package that this power plant represents. Nobody has given us anything that, what benefits will it give to the Antelope Valley, rather than to take millions of dollars and millions of dollars of taxpayers' money, send it to the San Joaquin Valley so we can make our air quality dirty? Now, if you want to vote no for that, that's okay.
Well, well, the question, when, when you say, you know, Mr. Chris, that, that this is a health risk and it's this and it's that, I just got done listening from Mr. Banks, because I wasn't at the AQMD like you were, so maybe you're getting information that I'm not getting, but I heard that there was, the SEQA came back with no significant health risk. Now, I know, sitting on the planet commission for years and, and Mr. Mann, too, you always have people that come up and say this is a health risk, and they disagree with what SEQA says, but that's, that's how I would be making my decisions, how does the, how does the EIR report come back? And if the EIR report comes back, there's no significant health risk, what other evidence do you have that shows that it's above the level for that? That's all I'm saying, I'm uncomfortable right now with it.
I did ask Mr. Banks if the PM10 was over the limit, and he said yes.
Didn't Three Mile Island come back with no significant health risks? Just a thought.
So what we're doing is, we're over the limit, but it, because of the system that it's allowed to mitigate it, okay? This system that they've now come in is saying we're limited to 35, period.
Right.
But the PM10, we're over the limit for PM10, so what they're going to do is, I, I believe it's $16 million, they're going to send to the San Joaquin Valley.
Who, specifically?
The city of Palmdale.
The city of Palmdale's going to send their money there?
Correct.
Okay.
So we can make the city of Lancaster's air dirtier.
My concern is, my, my concern is that we, we have a very short window. They're racing through, they're racing this as fast as they can to beat, beat that October deadline, I mean-
Sure, it's clear.
Uh, and, and any attempt for us to delay what limited action we can take plays right into their hands, I mean, doesn't it?
I, I, I would assume so, but I think that it's, it's, again, I would remind the entire council, it's just not the jobs, the jobs are the major thing that we're looking at right now, but it's the entire package, it's the 2.5, it's, it's, the 2.5 is basically emissions, this is the, the stuff that causes cancer in kids, this is, 114 tons will be dumped into the city of Lancaster. I'm not up for that.
And, and I understand that, there's always some level of threshold, and sometimes it changes, and that's what happened. That threshold changed in October, and when it comes to the PM10, well, when you say about mitigation, you're not willing to mitigate, well, we're possibly going to have projects that SEQA that we're going to have to mitigate. We have to mitigate stream beds, we have to mitigate pollution, we have to mitigate a lot of things, mitigation is part of that SEQA process and part of development, and so I'm not really-
Again, Ron, you have to take a look at, this is the city of Palmdale impacting the city of Lancaster.
Right.
I would remind you, you're a Lancaster city councilman, and these are the citizens of Lancaster that you need to take a look at.
Okay, thanks for reminding me, I wasn't sure, you know, what-
I appreciate it.
-city I was in right now.
Let me, let me just go back and, and say, everything that we looked at, at air quality, has been, could this plant be built? Can this be mitigated? Can the, the health issues be mitigated? And it was, could it be built? But we're to the point where should it be built? We, at one time, also talked about, let's get everybody back to the table, let's make sure that everybody understands Edwards Air Force Base, Plant 42, all the aerospace companies, is there, how, how do we actually do that, Mr. Bozigan?
Well, I think what we've started is we've given all the aerospace firms, having worked in aerospace, I know they have a process, they, they've talked about, they've raised the issue, I know at least two of the aerospace firms are very concerned, we've also made contact with the Air Force Lieutenant Colonel who happens to not be available at the moment, but we've set up a meeting next week, and we're working through the air district, and I know that the media has also covered the story and will continue to cover this. But we have a meeting specifically set, or we will, as soon as we can get a date from the Lieutenant Colonel.
Until I'm assured that everybody concerned and knows exactly what's going on, and I'm, I don't know, I am kind of torn, do we oppose it right now? I know I don't want to see anything proceed until all these parties give me a green flag that it's okay.
Mr. Haas, you're, you're one of the major retailers, what, you have any thoughts about this?
I really do, I'm sitting over here getting angry, listening to what's being proposed in Palmdale, and all the financial implications, they're huge, all of those, I understand, I get, but the bigger issue is the health. I have seven family members that are, that have gone through cancer treatment, developed cancer, and, and most of them have been successful, my wife's a, a two-time cancer survivor, so if we're going to subject potential students, you know, residents, I have children, I have grandchildren that live here, if even one person is potentially going to develop cancer because of this, this should be stopped, blocked, and I would encourage you, stop it any way you can. This, this is very upsetting. To have somebody have to go through cancer treatment till you've lived it, lived with it, and seen it firsthand, don't, don't subject anybody to that, please. And that's what I'm sitting over here getting angry about, this, nobody should be subjected to that, ever. Stop it. Financial issues, whole different thing, but what's a person's life worth? None of that, means nothing. It's more important to, to protect our health. If we're kids under this, and-
It's not worth one child getting cancer.
It's not, it is not. No amount of money can replace that person's life.
I agree.
Ever. So I would encourage it, do whatever you can do to block it and stop it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Okay, does everybody weigh in?
Call for the question, then.
No, I want to say something.
Okay.
You know, you know, to me, this, this is, this really is, what type of vision do we have for this valley? You know, I mean, we talk about making this the solar capital of the world, the scientists tell us that we could power all of the Southwest, Arizona, New Mexico, all of Southern California, just by the solar capacity, that it isn't going to make one person- sick, isn't going to create one bit of pollution, isn't going to increase the carbon load on this planet, one iota. And we can do all of that here, or we can start trashing this beautiful valley that God gave us. And there's this move afoot to turn this into a San Fernando Valley, that we shouldn't care what happens to it, that we shouldn't worry about our air quality, that we shouldn't be concerned with this gift we were given. I, you know, I have a lot of friends that are supporting this plant, and I'm telling them now, and I've told them before, it is our job on this council to protect this city above all else, and we cannot do that by allowing this plant to be built if we can do anything to stop it. This is not a new hybrid, state-of-the-art technology. What, 2% of the power, when you actually look at the electrons that get into the wires, will come from solar from that plant. It is a scam. It is a scam to have a gas-fired plant built in the very heart of our valley. Every sane person out there knows that if you're going to build one of these things, you build it on the outskirts of the community. You build it where it's going to have the least impact on the people who live here. I mean, not even a dummy would think that it's okay to put this in the very heart of our community. But because of political ramifications, and because of economic considerations, and because of where the deal was struck for the land, that's what they want to do. And I'm sorry, that is just, that's just evil, to do that to where we live. You know, you don't put the toilet in the living room, you just don't do it, and every one of us know it. And with that, I will call for the question. It's one abstention and four yeses. It passes. Thank you.